Will, probably better than tomorrow. I have an eight o'clock, four minute in the morning for a roof and house. Have a tough start to the day.
It's early.
Yes, too early for me. Maybe I'll sleep too hard on it.
They probably helped you do that.
Yeah, they, yeah. This is the second part of it. I went one time. And Stowe's is fine, they're just doing it for preservation purposes so they can put a cap on it. But the cost of it bothers me as much as anything, almost twelve hundred dollars. I'm sure in Echo, are we live?
Yeah, it just turned on so he can see.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, almost twelve hundred dollars. That's our taxpayers' money.
All the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Monday, January 27th, 2020, at 6:00 PM, to order. And we'll start as always with our invocation, and I think it's Commissioner Yance's turn.
Anyone that would like to join, please stand. Our heavenly Father, we humbly come before you tonight and ask that you lead, guide, and direct us in the business at hand. Let our words and our actions be in alignment with your will. We ask that you give us travel mercies when you leave. We ask all these things in your precious name. Amen.
You want us to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start out with the agenda, approval of the agenda.
I move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? Not in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved, four of them. And we'll start out with our comments, my managers and our commissioners. And I'll start out with Commissioner Morris, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just welcome everybody, it's good to see you out tonight as to help us do our government business. Remind everybody that I'll be doing a blog this week, probably by Thursday hopefully, of the meeting, with a recap for those who were not able to participate tonight. And last of all, for the upcoming election on March 3rd, I would remind you that we would really like for you to seriously consider the quarter cent sales tax. For every penny we can raise with sales tax, that's money we won't have to, won't have to get property tax to pay the bills with. So if you're in that frame of mind where you would prefer everybody to participate and increase the ratio of sales tax to property tax, I would encourage you to support that. Quarter cent sales tax on the referendum that's coming up. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. We'll go to Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see everybody here this evening. See some smiles as a lookout, that's a lookout toward the audience, that's always encouraging. Also appreciate anyone who happens to be watching our live stream. One of these times, I'm gonna watch it myself, just to refresh my memory of all that's happened at the Tuckers meeting. But nice to see you folks. It's getting closer to the election, I think it's about a month and a week and a day. If my calculations are right, to the upcoming primary election, we should start seeing some political signs pretty soon. Don't you reckon? May even be some out there already. But anyway, Commissioner Morris mentioned the one cent sales tax. I think our county manager's put together a brochure on that. Very informative. I don't know, can folks go online and see it? It'll be available. Some good information there if you choose to avail yourselves of it. I think you'd find it very informative. Mentioned the election kind of in a sort of lighthearted way about the signs, which there does seem to be some out there. Please take the election seriously. Find out what you can about the candidates that are running and what they stand for and whom likely would be the best one to have in whatever position it would be to serve our county or state or our country. Elections are important, and the main thing is vote. I've heard it said over time that if a person doesn't vote, they have no basis to complain about who was elected because they didn't do their part to participate in the election. But anyhow, it'll be here pretty soon, and hope we'll all go vote and hope we'll make knowledgeable votes when we do. I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, otherwise I may be accused of talking too long, so we'll go with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. We'll go to Commissioner Yance.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight, I'd like to welcome you, and thanks for spending your time here with us. I also would encourage everyone in the room to study the quarter cent sales tax that both commissioners have alluded to. If you have questions, comments, whether you decide to vote up or down on it, make sure you have all the facts in hand going for. I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I'm sure any of the other commissioners would as well. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, sir. And I also want to thank everyone for coming tonight. And I did want to let you know that our chairman, Commissioner Nickelston, is not here tonight. He had a previous commitment and was unable to come. So be thinking about him, he should be back in town tomorrow, and be hoping that he has a safe trip back. Also, as the other commissioner said, I would just ask that you study the sales tax referendum information very clearly. And I just want to thank everybody for being here. Everything that you've done, everything you do every day for Stokes County, I say thank you. And I appreciate you coming out tonight and spending your Monday night with us. I'm going to also, as Commissioner Walker said, cut it off right there so we can keep the meeting moving. And thank everyone that is watching us live stream. And most of all, thank y'all. Thank you. Thank the citizens of Stokes County. And I'll go to our county manager, Ms. Oakley.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to comment on, but I do welcome everyone that showed up here tonight and all those that are visiting our meeting through video. But other than that, I hope everybody is well, stays well, and stays safe and healthy.
Thank you. Okay, next thing, the next item that we'll move to is public comments. And we have only one signed up, and that's Ellen. Ellen, if you'll come on up.
Ellen Parry, 1095 Wheeler Smith Road, Lawsonville. I'm here to give you an update on the arts. In the Apple Gallery now, we have Ever Changing Seasons. This was a media compilation of ten local artists. So that's going to be finishing up the end of January. In February, we're going to feature Kerry Sturtevant. He is a custom airbrush sign artist in Winston, but he also does paintings. So that will be our February feature, and the reception will be February 8th. Auditions for Broadway Comes to Danbury are going to be taking place soon. This is a chance for anyone local who's interested in theater to be onstage at the Arts Place to showcase your musical talents and acting abilities. So there's auditions Friday, January 31st, and Saturday, February 1st. Time is five o'clock and two o'clock, so everybody should be able to get there. And you can call the Arts Place and find out what you need to have to audition. On February 8th, we're going to have a musical concert, Doug Davis and the Men in Black Band. It's a tribute to the music of Tom Petty and the Smithereens, and that admission is $10. Trivia Night is going to be on the 13th. That's 6:30 PM. That has grown and it's, I just can't say enough about it. It's a lot of friends and family who come and play, so they have a good time. This week, this event, we're going to have homemade lasagna as our meal with a vegetarian option salad and dessert. All that food is available for a donation to the Stokes, our student scholarship fund. The Winter Dessert Theater kicked off with the Lonesome Tour on January 25th, which was Saturday, with Jason Petty bringing Hank Williams' musics and story alive. It was a sold-out show, and nobody left disappointed. Everybody loved the performance. On February 14th, there's two shows of Where There's a Will, There's a Murder. It's a Valentine's Day couples murder mystery, and that starts at 7:00 PM on the 14th and 3:00 PM on the 15th. Dessert service always starts one hour before the show. On February 29th, the Winter Dessert Theater is Hello, I'm Johnny Cash. That's going to be the 7:00 PM show, and March 1st is going to be the 3:00 PM show. On March 21st, we're going to have a play called The Distance Between Us. This is a play between, about a mother and daughter corresponding about, they're Quakers, and they're corresponding back and forth about things that are happening in the world. So that carries you through there, and we really appreciate any attendance that you make. We'd love to see you at the Arts Place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda consent agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve. Agreed.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? During that, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved, four of them. And under the consent agenda. Julia, do you want to do anything right at this point with budget amendments? Or you want to wait as we get to those later on in the budget amendments? Do you want to address this at this point, await it? Any questions for Julia on the audit contract? All right. Let's move on to the information agenda then, and we'll start out with the American Legion. And we have some special guests with us tonight, and I'm gonna ask them if they'll come up. Steve?
Yes, sir. Thank y'all gentlemen for allowing us to be here again tonight to talk to you. Do you remember back in July, I think it was, we came over and asked for assistance for the Stokes County Fair? And that worked out great. We had two good things this year happen to us. We had great weather, and we went all, every day, and then we had your help. And your premiums, your prize premiums. Last time I said premiums up here, it got in the papers, insurance premiums. People wanted to know if we were going broke. No, it was surprise premiums, and your money went to pay for the Stokes County FFA and the Stokes County 4-H. All their horses and cows and ponies and everything, and it really went well. We certainly appreciate everything y'all did. And we would like to make this a ongoing partnership. We can talk about that again later. But I want to introduce you to Mr. Ron Thorpe. He is our new Stokes County Fair Assistant Manager, and he has something new for you too.
Hey, thank you for letting us visit tonight. And on behalf of the American Legions Post 290 and the Fair Commission Committee, we have a certificate of appreciation, and I'll read that now. It says, "This certificate of appreciation is gratefully presented to the Stokes County Commissioners in recognition and sincere appreciation of outstanding service and assistance which contributed to the advancement of the Stokes County Agricultural Fair, presented by American Legion Post 290, District 18, Department of North Carolina, this 27th day of January 2020." And it's signed by Clifton Kilby, our post commander, and Tommy Gray, our post adjutant.
Thank you so much. Very kind of you.
Well, we appreciate the partnership with y'all and...
That is very kind, and our county manager has asked, if you don't mind, if he would like to have a picture of the four commissioners here tonight with you and Steve presenting that to us, if you don't mind.
That'd be great.
Shannon, taking a quick picture? Thank you.
Questionable.
Okay, under information, our next item is our sales tax information brochure information. And that will be presented by Mr. Jake Oakley. So Ms. Oakley, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members, I hope you all as well. And as you spoke earlier in doing the commissioners' comment, that how you would love to have folks in support of the one quarter of one cent sales tax that is on the primary ballot. Shannon, myself, and Will Carter are in promotion of this to make sure people are aware of what it is. And as she passes that out, we're gonna have brochures that will go over through the county. We're gonna do some advertisement in the Stokes News. We'll have it on the website, and we will, we are attending all of our meetings that we would like. If anyone has anything that's to do with civic groups, please give us a call and be more than happy to show up and go over any questions or concerns they would have concerning this sales tax. Mr. Chairman, what I'm doing here, ever since you've elected to place this on the primary ballot, is to come up with some cost and ways that it would take to educate the public on this. And what you're looking at is we're pretty much doing it in-house. We are, we made these, this brochure with the help of Tori, Tori May in Economic Development, and Shannon. And we've got, we would love to do approximately 5,000 brochures to send, to put out all over the county. We put them in all the mop, all the stores and the local mom and pop stores that we have all across the county, and also the other type of commercial businesses. We will, like I said, advertise it in the paper. But you can see the cost here that it's going to take to do that. And we're looking at producing this, and like I said, in-house. It's probably going to cost the taxpayers about $2,000 for us to do this brochure advertisements and the newspaper, with the newspaper being the larger cost of this. Because this will be two weeks in February, running a half a page ad, and then two weeks in February doing a quarter of paid ad. That is about $1,375 to get that whole month. But if folks, even if folks voted down, and they don't go with this route and that the board has requested, it's not going to be because we didn't tell them what it was about. And they got a good understanding of what it's going to be, what it's going to do, and that way they can make a good clear conscience vote on March 3rd on whether or not they want to support this sales tax. Always remember, it's like Commissioner Moore said, we are averaging out the burden on tax, tax rate compared to sales tax. And in sales tax, everyone has got some skin in the game, even those that visit our county. So I will always be a big opponent for sales tax. And this will lessen some of the burden on the property owner in providing revenues for whatever the county has need to, in doing and providing the services to all the taxpayers. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move forward, and with the board's got, give me their blessing on this, Shannon and Will and myself and some others, we'll hit the road running, make sure that everybody knows what's going on. And we've already got, as you can see, then when she passed it out, the Tower and Warrant Cove has done a resolution in approval in support of this. Danbury has done the same, and we will be in King on February the 3rd, I believe. There's the first Monday in each month, and we're gonna ask the City of King if they will do the same resolution in support to the Board of Commissioners in placing this on the ballot and moving forward with it. All this money we're maintaining, it all comes to the county, and then the commissioners, I'm sure, will put it in areas that is very much needed, no matter where it goes.
Okay, Commissioners, I think our county manager's done a very good job of describing this, but even though I know this is not under discussion, it's under information. But do we, if you have any comments or anything that you would like to ask our county manager or anything you want to say about it?
I may like that.
Yes, sir.
Thank our manager and Assistant County Manager, Kirk to the Board, Shannon, for all the work they've put into this, and Tori and others, Will, others who had a hand in it. I think you've done a good job. I think you're getting the message out pretty well.
That's what we hope to do.
Appreciate, appreciate all you've done.
Commissioner Moore?
I would, thanks, Mr. Chair. I would say it's really well done as well. It seems to me it answers all the pertinent questions that people will most likely have, and I think you guys gave them good answers there. So I think if they read that, they should be able to understand quite easily what our position is on it.
No, just thank you for your efforts in this. I think I had a few questions, and they're answered in here. So glad to see those items listed. And as I said earlier, if anyone has any questions, I'm open. I would appreciate you reaching out before you make a decision on this. Thanks for your efforts.
Well, we'll hit the road right in.
Thank you. I go to sign. I tell the Commissioners are certainly supportive of going ahead and ready to move forward with this.
We need to...
Do we need to levy tax? Can we just have a head shake that we're ready to go?
I was just wondering if we need to have it on action agenda and vote on it?
Something already done, already on the ballot, it's ready to go, it will be on there. Something you've already approved. This is just the cost that comes with it in making sure we educate our citizens on what it's about.
They would just, if we did vote on it, would just give our concurrence to what you've done and the way you've done it.
It's up to you, whatever you feel comfortable. You don't have to, because the dollar amount's under that $5,000 threshold. It was just, we wanted you to take a look at that brochure and be sure you didn't have any changes or suggestions you wanted to put in or anything like that, before we move forward with mass printing and doing that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with what you've done and how you've done it. I think you've done a very good job. And if, as the chairman, the vice chairman said, if you just want to head nod, I'm certainly willing to go that route.
That's good.
Very much.
Okay, yes, you have consensus to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Y'all have done a good job. Will, Tori, Shannon, Jake, all of you. Thank you very much.
Lot more to do, but we'll get it done.
Okay, I think that takes care of the information agenda, and we'll move forward with the discussion agenda. And our first item on the discussion agenda is the... with the discussion agenda. And our first item on the discussion agenda is the life right resolution information. And I thank Pam. She'll come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come on behalf of the hospital for a couple of items tonight. Since both of those have been worked on per your direction, which was quite a while ago, we spoke last about this in August or September. And I've been working with the county attorney, Ty Browder, and Commissioner Rick Morris per your direction on these items. So, we'll move forward and I'll ask if Ty would like to say anything or just have me go ahead and then you can answer questions or Commissioner Morris as well. Okay. The first item, both of these were in your packets, is regarding a hospital resolution to Cigna on behalf of the hospital becoming in network with Cigna for hospital services. We are currently out of network for the hospital with Cigna Commercial Insurance. We are in network with Cigna Medicare coverage for Cigna Health Spring. So, I have been working with Cigna. They'll communicate and say they're going to work with me and then we'll go silent. So, I hope that with your support that I might be able to get some more traction and being able to get in network and serve the citizens of the county. So, I'm not sure. Have you all been able to review that or do you have any questions?
We have, and I'm going to give each commissioner a chance for any comments they'd like to have. I would like to say to the Commissioners, if it's okay, with our chairman not being here tonight, after we do have the discussion or comments you have for tonight, I'd like to start it out back next week, at our next meeting on a discussion and with our chairman here. And then with him here and having been involved in the discussion, if we want to go ahead and move it to action at that time we can. So, let's go ahead and start with Commissioner Johnson and work our way down.
Yeah, I've read over the resolution and applaud you and Commissioner Morrison, Ty and the efforts put forth. I mean, I have no question. I don't have any opposition to the resolution. Hopefully, this will help nudge Cigna a little bit in the right direction and provide service to many of our citizens in the county without restriction.
Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, sir. Pam, thank you for being here. And thank you for all that you do for the folks in our county by working as hard as you do in your position at the hospital. Read over this a couple of times and wording seems very good, very appropriate, very adequate. Just curious about the timing. How is it, I mean, I'm reading that the agreement with Cigna basically ended November 1st, 2018.
Yes, sir.
That's a pretty good while back. And I'm kind of wondering why we've waited this long to do something like we're doing here. Did you just keep thinking, for example, that this was going to be resolved and that you were getting closer, but it just never seemed to happen?
So, we are continually working with all insurance payers about updates and contract negotiations. So, like I said, we would just communicate. I would think we had traction and we're about to reach an agreement. And then they would just go silent and say it was just a business decision not to move forward. And then I would try again. And we've just done this cycle several times now over the course of the year.
I think there's a similar situation with Blue Cross Blue Shield, but that's in litigation, I believe.
Yes, sir.
It just has to kind of run its course through the judicial system to see how it will eventually be resolved. Are there any other companies that have sort of put things on hold with the hospital or Cigna the last remaining one?
That's correct. Like I said, we're working with all insurance companies all the time for updates. But those are the two that we're currently out of network.
I know you don't have a crystal ball or a magical way of determining things, but in your view, can you identify a reason why Cigna continues to drag their feet as it appears that they're doing?
Not specifically. Like I said, they have just said it was a business decision.
Well, maybe the resolution has passed and I think probably will. I don't see why it wouldn't. Maybe that'll give things a bump or a nudge in the right direction and get some positive movement toward bringing some resolution to this situation. I know it would be of a significant benefit to the hospital to have them back on board.
It just dawned on me with your question about the length of time. We did do a letter writing campaign probably from November through March of last year. Employees, I wrote letters, providers wrote letters. And so, we thought we had some traction at that point and then didn't.
Could you maybe describe the impact that not having Cigna as in network makes on the hospital operation? What would you estimate the effect is from not having them on board?
Well, just working on our numbers that we have to report to the state of North Carolina for licensure for utilization of the last year for our surgery impact and our outpatient hospital services impact, the combination of Blue Cross and Cigna, those numbers were cut in half. So, that's significant revenue that we need for the hospital.
Certainly sounds like it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll stop here.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Morris.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have a lot to add. I think everybody's addressed everything I would have said. It's a bit of a mystery to me, I guess it for Pam too maybe, about why the insurance companies are as tough as they are on these rural hospitals. And you know, a lot of them have really encountered big problems. And things like this, when you put one on top of the other, on top of the other, it makes it very difficult to operate. So, I think we just, hopefully in our next topic we're going to talk about, we can get, help the hospital be more proactive and along with our support in trying to head these things off before they happen and all the kind of obstacles that we run into to keep a rural hospital open. Of course, we've put a lot of investment in this already and it's, there's a lot of value associated with having this rural hospital and the satellites that it operates in the county. So, definitely would like to get this out and hope it does some good. All have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I would also concur with the other three Commissioners and especially, I think Commissioner Morris hit along with Commissioner Walker, the two ideas there where it says where as many Stokes County residents are elderly and with fixed income and are unable to afford the higher cost of medical care at the hospital in Danbury by reason of life right, being out of the Cigna network and where Cigna's refusal to sign a provider agreement has caused hardship to many of the residents of Stokes County and threatens the viability of a small rural hospital in Stokes County. And as Commissioner Morris said, I think it's hard enough for rural, small rural hospitals to be successful without hardships placed in front of them. Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Pam?
No, just like you all, I'm sure, as you're out and about, the number of phone calls, people I meet in the community who have asked for us to continue to fight for this, if you had a piece of paper to hashtag every time somebody asks for you to help with this, then I've lost count at the people who have asked for us to continue to fight so they can have their local health care.
Attorney Browder, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I think it's been discussed pretty thoroughly. Hopefully, the city will see that the board and the county's enforcement board of the hospital would really need to then get it back in network. But it's really very necessary. So, hopefully that would happen.
I'd like to ask Commissioners if it's okay if we can start it out at our next meeting on discussion with our chairman being back at our next meeting. And then after that, I think we will shift it over to action if that's okay with everyone.
It would be.
We'll start it out with on discussion at our next meeting.
Okay.
Our chairman will be here at our next meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
And Pam, do you want to go ahead, why you up there and hit the hospital bylaws?
Sure.
Okay.
Since it has been a little while, I thought I would briefly help bring you all and anyone else who is listening, an update about why we have engaged this work of working on the bylaws. So, to summarize, the lease agreement for the hospital includes three parties. Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital, Inc., as the hospital entity that it's all about. Then Stokes County Commissioners as the sole member of that board. And that became effective in March 2010 when Baptist or Wake Forest Baptist Health did not renew the lease. So, at that time, the county took over as the hospital operator from March of 2010 to August of 2011, when they entered into the lease agreement for the operation of the hospital. So, when these bylaws were written, the county was operating the hospital. The day-to-day operations were delegated through a management agreement. But as I guess your Commissioner Walker are the one who has been here through all of that as a Commissioner, that served on both boards. So, because of the structure of the bylaws, the Commissioners met as the hospital board and then had to meet and approve their work as the county Commissioners. So, the structure was a little strange, but that's the reason we had the bylaws written the way they were. So, when the lease agreement was entered into in August of 2011, these bylaws were not updated. So, they still left all the provisions for operating the hospital. And with that, there are a lot of CMS regulations that say how hospitals are operated, some of the quality objectives, management of the medical staff that just are no longer applicable for these bylaws. So, that was the purpose of asking for the update as well as considering the board of the hospital to be able to work on behalf of the hospital on a local level when we needed support for such things as a resolution or working with other local entities. So, as we met and discussed earlier, per your direction, we've worked on updating the bylaws to have you still have the oversight as the Stokes County Commissioners, but to establish through the current bylaws, a committee that would be a hospital operations committee that you all had directed Commissioner Morris to work on getting the bylaws revised and moving forward to serve as the chair of that hospital operations committee. So, that is what we were tasked with. And I think we've accomplished that. I don't know if you want to say anything now or just have me continue?
Yeah, I think we've kind of stepped. I'm there with Pam and Commissioner Morris. They had done a lot of work on dividing the bylaws. So, I took it from Pam, what work that they have accomplished and added, basically the provision is about the hospital operations to them. But this is the cloud of resolve. And of course, this is a working draft, part of the local, the question, the recommendation.
I'll start with Commissioner Morris and see if he has anything.
I do, Ms. Chair. Thanks a lot. The, this is another kind of an attempt, kind of like we're doing with DSS and Health, to kind of decentralize a little bit from here in the Commissioner Board to make a little burden off of that, off this board and have some other folks that can dedicate their full attention to the hospital, do this with this hospital operations committee. What we basically have here are bylaws that apply to the Stokes Rentals Board, which we're asking you to update, approve our update of. But then I think the most important part of that is the establishment of this, of this update of these bylaws is the establishment of these hospital, of the hospital operations committee that can pay some close attention to helping the hospital and being advocate for the hospital. Just for instance, in a couple of years, the lease comes up for renewal. And so, you know, along with all of the daily and monthly and quarterly changes and so forth that the regulatory environment places on the hospital, we have business issues like that that need to be addressed. And I think the hospital operations committee will be the right group to do that. So, read that part especially careful. I think it's kind of all new compared to the other parts of the bylaws that were updated. I had one, if your copy you're looking at has a couple of areas that are highlighted and read, those are some comments that we gave back to Ty, Pam and I did after we looked at a draft from him. One of them has an unanswered question and it's in section, I believe, section eight, yeah, section eight of Article 7. And it's about having telephone meetings. We had a provision in there about meeting by telephone or attendance by telephone, I think it was just updated. I put in there, voting is or is not allowed. So, I didn't get a chance to get back with Ty to get his recommendation, but I wanted to ask him if we need to clarify whether we are able to vote or not vote if you attend by, if your attendance is by telephone. So...
I did not answer that question. It's because the general statutes, they don't address that. So, it's really a personal choice. The board, probably you as the board acting is more trusted. If you want to allow participation by telephone and allow voting by telephone, that's fine. If you want to allow just discussion by telephone and not vote by phone, that's fine too.
Okay, my preference would be to go ahead and allow us to vote by phone, but we can see what the other guys think about that. Just a couple of other points I would make. And you'll see these are in, I think we've got all of this in there. But the way we're trying to set the hospital operations committee up is the chairman of the Stokes Rentals Board, which is currently me and has been Commissioner Walker for the past few years, would be the chairman of the hospital operations committee. He would, he or she would be the Commissioner representative to that committee. And then we would ask the three municipalities to also provide an elected official to be on that board. And then, once those four positions are set, then we would ask those four people to recommend five other members that would be also recommended back to the Stokes Rentals Board, which is the Board of Commissioners for approval. None of this ever takes the final approval away from the Stokes Rentals Board, which are the five Commissioners. It just tries to... It just tries to put something in place that can do the groundwork for you guys and for myself. So that's the way we go about that, and we would not, the four, once the four people are established, then we would nominate five others based on geographic representation from the county and expertise they have in business or medical or type things that would be logical kind of expertise to have on the board. I guess once we get the hospital operations board then all set with the staff, staff with the board members, we would probably, one of the first things we would need to do is come up with some rules and procedures of how we would operate those meetings, and they would be Robert's rules and similar to other committees and so forth. Last thing, I think Pam and I talked about was, to approve these bylaws, we may need to convene a meeting of the Stokes Rentals Board. Maybe we can do it 15 minutes prior to the next commissioner meeting or something, or whatever, however you guys want to do it. And I'll get Ty's recommendation if this is necessary or not, but I think that board would probably actually be the one that needed to approve the bylaws. So if you'd entertain the idea of doing that. Then I think the rest of it, if you read the bylaws, should be fairly self-explanatory and fairly similar in most cases, just to what the previous bylaws were. It's just described so that the current information is relevant to our current situation. And that's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We'll go to Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As Pam mentioned, I have some history with the hospital, and as Commissioner Morris mentioned, I chaired the Board of Trustees while the county was operating the hospital. And those were, to say the least, interesting times. Learned a lot about hospital operation during that year or so that the county actually ran the hospital. I'm a little bit uncertain as far as the role of the Stokes, just my home key here, Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital, Inc. I was under the impression that that particular identifier, or as the operation of the hospital, had been phased out. That when Life Bright acquired the lease for the hospital, they acquired the right to run, to manage the hospital as they so chose, because they basically, they don't own it, but they have it. We still technically own it, but I think they can automatically renew their lease for many years to come, if they so choose. So I'm wondering, what is the Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital at this time? Ty, can you shed some light on that, please? It has no assets that I'm aware of, and no authority.
Well, you have an asset that's the lease. Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital, Board is responsible for monitoring the lease agreement to make sure that, in that it's life right now, complies with the lease terms.
I was thinking that was the Board of Commissioners, who actually leased the hospital to Life Bright.
Well, the Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital, Inc., and Stokes County, is the hospital.
Right.
The county owns all the land, except one tribe. That one tribe that's very, back, is still in the name of Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital.
But that's the only thing that's under the direct auspices of the Stokes County Memorial Hospital, Inc. I'd even forgotten about that one parcel.
The county is a, is a, language of the land, building. And the Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital, Inc., is, they were actually operating the hospital. So they're no longer operating the hospital, but they have the asset, the lease, the lease is the asset.
Right.
So I look at that board as monitoring the lease operations, to make sure that the lease terms are being followed, and monitoring whether you require reports from Life Bright on a regular basis.
To this board?
Right.
I do remember back when Pioneer acquired our hospital several years ago, there was discussion then about actually whether the Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital or Board of Trustees needed to even continue to exist. And at that time, it was seriously considered, as far as I could tell, actually just phasing it out, because Pioneer had full authority, according to their lease, pretty much to run the hospital as they chose, as does Life Bright, because they acquired the Pioneer lease. And so, kind of reflecting back, I'm still uncertain how much authority, direct authority, based on the lease with Life Bright, do we have to tell them what to do, even if we had suggestions we'd like to make to them? Nothing that I'm aware of says they'd have to do what we ask.
As long as they're complying with the lease terms.
Exactly.
We don't have any authority to tell them.
That's how I was thinking.
Your task is to monitor the operations, to make sure that the lease terms are being applied. If any of them are not being applied, then it is your obligation to address that with Life Bright, and correct the deficiencies in the operation of the board.
Right. And what I have as a goal, or what I would like to see, is adequate and appropriate health care provided for all parts of the county. And then we start putting a plan in, and maybe this operations committee, hospital committee, could start looking at things like, how can we get the most use out of whatever resources we have or can acquire to serve all the county? And I think Life Bright is making an effort. They have, I think, a surgery center in King, or was it something in Wallicoo? But I don't know whether it's still there or not. And they have a pine hall facility. So they're not just in Denver, but there's other needs in other parts of our county that I'm not sure are getting any, are very much attention. And I'd like to see us have a meeting in place to start looking at the needs of the whole county, versus just what we can do with the Stokes Rentals, what we used to call the Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital. Now, if you don't know what it is now, just look at the sign that says Life Bright. And so, I don't mind having a set of restated bylaws, I'm just not sure what purpose they're going to serve, because Life Bright runs the hospital. I'm not sure how this all fits together.
Well, if I may, I would have you think of the Stokes Rentals as the license for the hospital, because you as the county commissioners really wouldn't want to just hold that license in and of itself, so it makes it a cleaner definition that it is a part of, or a cleaner separation, that it is a part of what you do, but it is not, it is not put entirely on the county.
Pam, are you referring to certificate of need?
Yes.
Our certificate of need is under the total control of Life Bright, I believe, as the leasee of the hospital.
That's correct, but it's through the lease arrangement. So if, for whatever reason, either party chose to say that they did not want to continue in the lease, then the license would have to be dealt with. So it would prevent, if you remember, when we had to go through the separation from Baptist, there was much legal work to go through all of those required meetings. I don't know if you remember how many we had to have at defined periods. So if we did not continue this separate entity as it was put together, all that would have to be duplicated again, would take months to duplicate that whole process if something down the road needed to be done with the license or with the certificate of need, however you want to look at it.
I think some of my gray hair and some of my absence is fair, keeping those times.
Yes.
Very challenging.
So it would...
Time for our county.
Yeah, it would benefit to keep this entity or this corporation in place, so that that process would not have to be duplicated again.
I guess basically my concern is, and it's not a big one, not a significant thing, I don't want Life Bright, they seem to be really tried. They put some resources into our county, and we never had an ideal situation with their hospital, but it has been operating, and I've not been getting the phone calls, I was getting it one time and all, so things are working, could be better, case in point, sign of Blue Cross. But the hospital does seem to be working, and I would not want Life Bright to feel like we're intruding, trying to exert pressure on them through a Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital, Board of Trustees, when they have the exclusive right to run the hospital pretty much as they choose. So that's kind of where I am now. I believe there is a need for a hospital committee here in our county, not just for certain parts of the county, but to be looking at needs for all of the county. Is this the best step in that direction? I'm not sure.
Yes.
It is a step in that direction.
Yeah. You have stated exactly what we tried to establish with the municipalities being that first group. So we have representation of all the county, and then add folks who are interested and have expertise with business or health care. But part of the reason that we came back to look at this and even revisit the bylaws was Pine, Life Bright's other hospital in Georgia. The structure in Georgia is that they operate with a local group that's a hospital authority. And Life Bright was expecting you as our county commissioners to sort of act as that hospital authority. So they actually welcome, they don't see this as any threat, they welcome a committee who would be concerned and help interface with them for improving health care services in the county.
That's encouraging to hear you say that, because if they're on board, and they feel like this step would help them operate the hospital at a better level through feedback, input, whatever, that sends a good message to me. It may well be worth giving it a try. We've really had some interesting times over the years, with some of the directions the hospital's gone in.
Sure.
And hopefully it's as stable now as it's been in a while. If it's not, you're not telling us, so I'm hoping that things are operating fairly well. I just don't want to see Life Bright feel uneasy, or them to be able to say, you know, we didn't want this, need this, so we'll add to that, to our list of reasons to not have our presence in Stokes County. I don't believe it. We need a hospital, we need medical services, and if this, if the pieces are fitting together in a positive way by taking this step, then I can support it.
Yeah, just as I'm coming and communicating with you all, I've communicated each of these steps with them in our hospital board meetings.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Yance?
Yeah, so I've read over this, and I'll keep it very brief. To me, this is, you know, we said that we wanted to be a partner with Life Bright and try to figure out a way to bridge that somewhat of a gap that's there, and make sure that it's viable in the future. To me, this is the first step in that. It serves as a catalyst to have a board that can give input, not direct, but give input where needed. And when you have municipalities throughout the county that are participating in that, then I think that certainly you have some good stakeholders. That being said, I'll jump right to what Commissioner Morris said about the section eight. I would hate for us to limit potential candidates that would be part of the five member or the nine eventually. So as far as voting by phone, I certainly would support that, so.
Thank you, Pam. I just have four or five things that I want to go back over, make sure with Commissioner Morris here, and he's our representative, just to make sure I'm on the right page with So we're willing to form a group called the Hospital Operations Committee. The Hospital Operations Committee is going to monitor the operations of Stokes Rentals Memorial Hospital. We'll have nine voting members, five at large members from all geographical areas, four from the municipalities. And I see it as, the question was brought forward, vote by phone or not vote by phone. I am strong in agreement that we give them, give them the option to vote by phone. Now, I served on the side, take Board of Trustees, and we have to have meetings where we have to have phone offices, and we have to vote by phone sometimes. And I think that gives this group, the Hospital Operations Committee, flexibility, if you give them a chance to be able to vote by phone. That's my opinion. I think, Mr. Morris, you were in agreement with that.
It would also be this, the Stokes Rentals, Inc. Board also be able to vote by phone as well.
Right, the trustees actually in this section.
Right. So did I miss anything, or was everything I said pretty accurate?
Yes, sir.
So what I, I don't know if the rest of the board would be okay with this, but once again, with our chairman not here tonight, and this is a very important step forward. You know, sort of as Commissioner Morris said, you know, we've gone to a DSS board, we've gone to a health board, now we have a hospital operations committee that's being recommended as part of our new bylaws. I think that, my own personal opinion would like to be this, and certainly if there's disagreement, I'm certainly welcome to it. I think I'd like to see it put back on discussion one more time with our chairman here. And then each person get a chance to look over the gap for another two-week timeframe, go back over it in discussion at our next meeting, and if our chairman and all the board members feel comfortable at that time, moving it to action. How does everyone feel about that?
I'm good with that. I think, Pam, I may have this confused with something else you told me, but there is some urgency about getting it approved, or a grant or something that you guys are...
Yes, I'm very excited to add that.
Okay. Yeah, so as long as we can move it to action next time, we'll...
Yeah, that's...
...that requirement, I think, but go ahead.
Pam, if we move it to action at the next meeting, would that suffice for your grant?
Yes, yes.
Would you like to tell us about the grant?
Yes, I would. The Office of Rural Health is very supportive in North Carolina and on a national level, so I was invited to apply for a grant with Texas A&amp;M Center for Optimizing Rural Health, and we were awarded that grant. So they would like to fly in February 24th and 25th and interact with the hospital and with community members with you all. So that just happens to be right before your board meeting on the 24th, if you all would like to entertain meeting with them. But they have lots and lots of resources that will be very beneficial, and would, the timing would be perfect to work with a local hospital operations committee. timing would be perfect to work with a, a local hospital operations committee. So if, if, even if we don't have any members identified, we could review the structure with them and then they could, could see how our, our current structure is at that time. But in addition to that, we also got a flex grant with the North Carolina Office of Rural Health. So we've got sort of two entities that are coming together, offering support that, that this committee could work with. So I think all those things will just, just be good for us to move forward and have good things in store.
I'm gonna ask our county manager.
Mr. Moore, you can promote that.
Okay. Yes, just giving me a... Do you have, do you have to meet as the hospital board to approve the bylaws?
Did you say move it to action for next times? If you do that...
I'm saying start it out as discussion.
Move it to action, but don't you, don't you have to meet as the hospital board to...
So, uh, can you answer this question?
That won't work to have it approved next time unless you plan a meeting of the hospital board too somehow in correlation with that, right?
So Ty, you need to give us direction on this.
The hospital board will have to meet and approve.
Like we suggested, doing that before the next commissioner meeting, just for a few minutes.
That's what you talked about before.
Yeah, then we could put on discussion for that meeting and move it to action at that meeting as well.
Yeah, I just...
Will that work with them?
We were talking about maybe with our action, that wasn't gonna help you as far as getting it approved or that, so.
Meeting like 15 to 30 minutes before...
I'd say five.
...actual meeting, okay? Can we do that?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker, yes?
Yes, thank you, sir. Couple of things. One is whether you vote by phone or not, doesn't matter to me. Either way, I think it's up to the committee to decide how they want to handle that. When they get together, they could easily decide how they want to conduct themselves as a committee. I'm still kind of wondering, here we sit looking at bylaws for the Board of Trustees, but we're not meeting as a trustees. This is a board of commissioners meeting. And, and I don't see much connection, as I look at these bylaws at all, to the Stokes County Board of Commissioners. I'm kind of, a little bit curious how the commissioners fit into the process with what I'm reading here with this operations committee and, you know, there's no feedback specified for the commissioners or anything. It's just like we kind of dropped by the wayside far as the day-to-day operations of the hospital, or the, not day-to-day, but the ongoing operation. Now, have I missed, Ty, or any other commissioner? Help me, please.
It's three parties to the lease.
Or, no, not the lease, the operations committee is what I'm focusing on now. Is there any interaction at all between the operations committee and Board of Commissioners?
Yes, sir. As I, I'll take a stab and if I'm wrong, you can correct me. So with this structure, anything that the Hospital Operations Committee would do on behalf of the Stokes Reynolds Memorial Hospital, Inc., you would, we would bring any action from that committee to the Stokes Reynolds Board and you would approve or take action on that. Then anything from that board would then be brought to you as the Stokes County Commissioners as the sole members of the Stokes Reynolds, Inc. Corporation. So just as we, when, when you were on both boards, we would meet at the hospital as the Stokes Reynolds Hospital Board. We would come down here and I would present the same information we covered up there just because of the structure to you for any voting items. Those had to be brought here to the commissioners. So it is structured to have, have your vote as the Stokes Reynolds Board sole members and then as the Stokes County Commissioners.
I didn't actually see that in what I'm reading. I didn't see that the operations committee would have any, I think there's a commissioner would be on the committee. Other than that, I didn't see any connection.
But any action, the way it's structured, any action that the committee would offer would have to be voted on by the, by you as the commissioners or by you as the hospital board members and then as the commissioners.
Mr. Attorney? Can you clear, can you clarify that?
It's very confusing because it's the same board.
Yes.
Yes or no?
I think you have to think about it a little before you can get the distinction. The Board of Commissioners is the sole member of the, of the Stokes Reynolds, Inc. So you, you control the, the trustees of the board. But under the bylaws, the Stokes Reynolds, Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees has to approve amendments to the bylaws. So this board is not going to approve that. Stokes Reynolds, Memorial Hospital, Inc. will approve the...
So are we even involved with this part of the process?
No, no. You, you, this board will not take any official action regarding this. Basically, you're just reviewing this to give your informal status through what the Board of Trustees, what you as the Board of Trustees are doing. It would, it would be easier to understand if they're focused. If they're membership, if they're the same board, if they're last, if they're... No, you, as far as the meaning of bylaws, this board takes no action. The hospital board...
Commissioner Walker?
I'm processing.
I see you, yes. I see that mine working.
I think then what we're doing here this evening is kind of more unofficial than official.
Yes.
We're just looking at it, reviewing it, but until we meet as the hospital Board of Trustees, you know, we as the Board of Commissioners cannot approve, as our attorney said, cannot approve the bylaws for what is a separate functioning entity.
Meet us at the board, you'll have a head start.
Yeah. So at our next meeting, the plan is is to meet at 5:30 as the hospital board.
That's, that's what I'm guessing. At our next meeting, we'll meet 30 minutes earlier as the hospital board.
That gives, that gives you time, right? We'll be done a few minutes before six, so you can...
That'd be fine.
And I will not be here at the next meeting.
Okay.
Along, along plan, 25 to 30-person event at the same time as a meeting.
I understand, I just hate to say...
That's another reason I'm glad we brought it up tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I will not be here.
You do understand though now what they're saying.
Oh, yeah. It is somewhat complex and it's somewhat blurred. And it, we do, as Ty mentioned, have the same folks staffing both boards, but we have to wear different hats.
Anyone else have any further comments they'd like to make on this? Well, Pam, I think what we're gonna do then is at the next meeting, Shannon and Jake, can we meet at 5:30 at the next meeting as the hospital board?
Yeah.
You won't be here, will you be?
Yeah, I won't be here, but Christie will, will come on my behalf and take the minutes for that board.
I'll take care of that meeting as the chairman.
Commissioner Morris should be here, right?
You, will you advertise this meeting to...
Yes.
Okay.
Got it.
Yes.
You better be there, 'cause I'm asking you to talk about it.
I'll make the point.
Am I good with this? Commissioner Yance? Okay. I think, I think that's the route we're gonna take now.
Thank you for allowing me this big part of your meeting.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Let's go to our Morse Place lease and that's Mr. Ogden.
Mr. Chairman, board members, we need to have our lease agreement updated with the Arts Council, Stokes County Arts Council. The lease updated would be on the location of 500 502 and 504 North Main Street. In the current lease, it talks about subletting to nonprofit organizations. And you lease will say, state that the Arts Council may sublet office or and/or retail space within the lease premises to individuals or organizations as long as it's using this said space and that is compatible with the Arts Council purposes and activities. This lease will be allowed to for-profit organizations to be there. So currently, I believe that's what they're doing and this will give the Arts Council to move forward with continuing what they're doing and we will just update our lease that probably should have been done all along, but once the Arts Council had done all the renovation that they had at this location, which is, is beautiful. So I think it, I'm asking the board to just go ahead and place this on the action agenda for the next board meeting to be approved, to amend the lease and then add this amendment to the current lease, because this is all it is as an amendment to, to paragraph six under section five, initial, uh, stating that the Arts Council responsibility is hereby deleted and replacing as, as the following just read.
Thank you, sir. We'll start with any comments, questions directly to my right this time. Commissioner Yance?
Yeah, I've read over it and again, our partnership with the Arts Council, I hope, will stay strong. You guys do a wonderful job down there and, and I certainly support this. The only thing that I had a question on is the amendment, I understand what we're replacing, but the term of the lease was a five-year term originally that expired in 2018 as far as looking at the original. Do we need to extend that?
Timeframe was, it was actually updated.
Well, the way, the way it reads, when you read the term of the lease, it actually ended November 30th, 2018 unless terminated sooner. The term of the lease shall automatically be extended for five additional terms unless sooner terminated after the conclusion, the extended 25-year term. So it automatically renewed anyway.
Oh, renewed, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we needed to change the date.
That's a good question, but once, once we started looking at it and decided it needed to be amended anyway, we wanted to get that done first, so.
Outside of that, no, I fully support, fully support it.
Good with the rest?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker? You're good with...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm, I'm fine.
You're fine?
I'm fine as well.
And so am I. So you'd like to move it to action?
Action for the next board meeting.
Everybody good with it being moved to action?
The next meeting.
Next meeting it'd be on action. Okay. Our budget goals meeting, we usually start in March. I say that we have three dates and I'll turn this over to Ms. Shaver.
I'm just looking at the calendar. We had some earlier last year, but we weren't quite able to get those in this time with trying to work on the sales tax referendum, wanted to get that behind us first before we start the budget meetings. So we just looked at some Thursdays in March to keep it simple. Last year you had two budget goals meetings and there was the only two that we had before we went into working on the budget. So we've got listed for Thursday, March 5th, the 12th, and the 19th. I didn't put a time in. I'm assuming for convenience, probably for those that work, six would probably still be the best time for meetings and somebody can say if that's not true, but I would think that'd probably be more convenient for everybody. So we just need to know if you wanted to stick with that same two meetings and then which dates would work for everybody pretty much. And we can also check with Mr. Nicholson when he gets back and see about his, if he can concur with the dates that you come up with that work the best.
Thank you. Ms. Shaver, what's for with Commissioner Morris?
I'm good with all three of those dates. I can do any of them, so.
Commissioner Walker?
I think this should work.
Yance?
Yeah, Thursdays are, are good for me and six o'clock would be great if it, if it works for everyone else.
And I'm good with all three dates and six, is everybody okay with six o'clock?
Okay. So do you want me to ask Andy for his opinion and then go with two dates or do you want to keep three on the book or do you think two is enough, the goals?
I would prefer we just keep three and if we need to, we don't list the third one. I mean...
Okay. That's the third one, maybe as needed to list and then...
Yeah.
Go from there.
Okay. Commissioner Walker, okay with that? I say a yes. Commissioner Morris, yes?
Okay.
We'll keep all three dates and they'll be at six o'clock and if we don't need the third one, we can delete it.
Yeah, I'll just put it in as, as needed and then, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item under discussion is a proposed solar farm resolution. Commissioner Morris? I say your name under that.
Okay, I'll take it, Mr. Chairman. I drafted this resolution after having a conversation with, with David Sutter up in the planning department. There appears to be another solar, large solar farm looking Stokes County. And I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is, but these folks are able to move very quickly. They're well-funded and so forth. And as everybody's probably aware from our previous discussions, we, we, we have David already working on some ordinance changes for this, but it's, I think we get, it's said 12 to 18 months to get, get those done. So I don't think we have him working in a fashion that would happen quick enough to head off another solar farm if one is really moving our direction. So I propose that we do a moratorium and it's spelled out in the resolution there. A lot of things are hanging out with the, there's rules hanging out that are due a couple of years from now that we still don't have from the state on solar farms. There are, we don't have any experience with this and it's gonna take a significant amount of time to, to see what happens with the first big commercial solar farm that we, that we approved already, along with the municipality down along the code. I'm just, I'm, I'm really, you know, the, I guess my motive is to try to make sure we don't become a dumping ground for a bunch of commercial solar farms. It could have all sorts of negative repercussions in the county and at least until we see what happens with this first one that we approved and, and see what positive or negative outcomes we have from that. The, I just saw today an article, which I was looking on my phone here for, and it says, "Top Executives Plead Guilty to Participating in a Billion Dollar Ponzi Scheme." The biggest criminal fraud scream in the history of Eastern District of California and the owners that are being charged are DC Solar. So there's, you know, there's been other calamities with, with solar folks, especially back during the previous administration, federal administration under Obama where, I forget how much we gave to that one out there that went belly up. Also, I've, I noticed today that I found an article that the EPA has just put out. I'm gonna ask Shannon if she'll scan this and send it to everybody, but it's dealing with drinking water and the, and the so, and the concerns associated with a chemical that the, the acronym is PFAS. I'll just read this little intro and then I'll, I'll make the article available for anybody who wants to read it. It said, "Attached is latest notice from the EPA about their extreme concern with PFAS, which is a long chemical poison compound and the horrific problems they can cause aquifers. As I alerted you in earlier email, PFAS are typically found on solar panels. Citizens should not wait for the federal government to take action, which they hopefully will eventually do. The solution is to put strong protections against these carcinogenic chemical, chemicals into local solar ordinances." And this email, which I can forward, I'll forward to you Shannon, has got a link in it where they recommend some wording that you can use in your local ordinances. So, so I'll get that over to you tomorrow so you can distribute it out. And then, and anybody would like a copy of it can get it from Shannon or from me or from anybody. So anyway, the, so that's my, that's my objective here is to not try to undo what we've already have David working on, but just to give ourselves time. You know, we, I, I had asked a lot of questions about the previous solar farm, 32 of them. You know, I had asked a lot of questions about the previous solar farm, 32 of them, I think. And I eventually got answers back from the vendors, the folks that were here with the solar thing, but they were all real general answers, you know, that you really couldn't draw any good conclusions from. Like an example would be, well, is poison from treating the grass going to get in the river? And their answer is, well, we're going to have a licensed person put down the poison. Well, that's a nice answer that answers the question, but I still don't know if poison's going to get in the river or not. So I would be, I would be much more comfortable, given the potential negatives and the long period of time that these solar farms tie up the property, that we put a moratorium on them for as long as Ty thinks we can do until we at least have a chance to look at this first, this first solar farm that we did approve and see kind of how that pans out for the county. But scenic beauty and so forth, you know, it just really concerns me that we could screw that up by letting giant solar farms come in here one after another. So that's my comments, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker?
Thank you. I have mixed feelings. One is I'm a strong supporter of green energy. I think that's where our country's headed and I'm really glad that we are. Two of the main things that provide green energy is windmill farms and solar farms. There should be enough solar farms around this country to have a really good idea of what it takes to make them work the way they should. When I attended the commissioners' conference, either the one this past year or the year before, I went to a breakout session on solar farms. They provided a lot of information, some negative, a lot positive. And I didn't leave that session with a feeling that solar farms were high-risk as far as polluting the land. There were aesthetic questions. People don't like all those panels in their neighborhood. It kind of detracts from it. But I left with a feeling that given the right place and done it the right way, there's a lot of benefits to solar farms. I wouldn't want to lock ourselves in, take a three-year hiatus, three-year moratorium if this is something that really would benefit our citizens by having in our county. And how much of a right do we have to tell a person how to use their land? That's always a question for me. In other words, if you have some land and you decided the highest and best use for that land is a solar farm that would produce income for the landowner, is it right for this board to tell that landowner just because we're uncertain about certain things for something that's fairly well-proven technology that they can't do what they want to do with their land? I'm not sure. So I really can't say yes or no to something like this. It's just too early in the process for me. If there's something that is prohibitive, if there's something that pops out as, gosh, that's a reason to really tread slowly, very cautiously with solar farms, I take it into account. But right now, I don't have it. Commissioner Morris referenced certain instances. Whenever money's involved, there's going to be greed and corruptness. It seems like it just kind of goes together nowadays. And the situations like in California are sad, but I don't know, I haven't read or heard of a solar farm done right that's causing any problems. And so there's definitely two sides to something like this. And before I jumped on board with saying you can't do it in our county for three years, I need more information than what I have. And so I'm not ready to take this step at this time with a resolution of this type. I just need more information. Stop there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Yance?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments that the other two commissioners have made, but this is precisely the reason I voted against our solar panel that we're currently looking at in the county. It's too many unanswered questions for me. You know, I wrote down asbestos was once built the material of the future and now we spend billions of dollars to remove it out of facilities. Same thing with this. It uses carcinogens such as arsenic, cadmium. It produces hexafluoride as well as many other dangerous. It's not been proven not to. So for the same reasons that you are hesitant to put a delay on it, I'm hesitant to proceed with it. So that's kind of my stance. It was a few months ago when we voted on the first one and it remains today. So that's all that happened.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate all the information that Commissioner Morris gathered for us and also time asked by all of the commissioners. Certainly, I think on something of this importance, I feel very strongly that we need our chairman's involvement on this one. I mean, we're talking about a three-year moratorium on something and our chairman is not here to have any involvement in it. Not saying either way at this point that I just think Commissioner Nicholson would want to definitely have some input on this. This is very important. You've got some good comments to start out with tonight and Shannon, I mean, if you want to put it back, well, Commissioner Walker, did you say you would?
Well, not me, it's the next meeting. I miss about one every year or so and you just happen to hit on this one.
That's okay. Maybe the meeting after he gets back.
Okay.
We can get back on this.
Put it on discussion the second meeting in February. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, when we have all five members here. We've got different, I'm hearing different things. I definitely want all five. I'm just the vice chair and I definitely want the chairman here on this one and let Commissioner Walker be present. Let's see all five members here for this one.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank everyone and I'm sorry, Commissioner Morris, go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of other comments, you know, we tell people all the time what to do with their land through zoning. So me, you know, I certainly agree with you that you have to be careful when you're telling people what they can and can't do with their land, but there's, you know, for the better good, we have to do that sometime. The, I think it's real easy to find yourself in front of pro-solar farm people, but there's a whole lot of people out there that can give you that other side of the story. And I think probably, especially if we're going to take another month, you know, before we do it, we maybe should line somebody up and hear the not-so-pro side of the solar. We've heard all the salesmen and the folks that will talk you into doing a solar farm, but I think that other side of the community may show that this is not so well-proven, some of these things. And just the logic of how they do pesticides and stuff, I can tear holes, all the pieces in it, I think. So I think maybe if we can find somebody, I'll certainly recommend somebody maybe if I can that we could get to give us the other side of the story. And some pro-solar person too, if they want to come too, if you have whatever.
Commissioner Walker?
Can I kind of go on with what Commissioner Morris is suggesting? And that is, unlike a neutral person who is very knowledgeable, maybe do it with one person, someone who's very knowledgeable of the upside and downside of solar panels and just bring us more information about what we're looking at on both sides. We could find a really knowledgeable person who could come make a presentation to us, help us increase our knowledge level, both with the pros and cons.
Okay, I'll see if I can find somebody and recommend for that.
Or maybe Shannon or Jake could, if you need their help.
I'll recommend it to them and they can check it out.
Yeah, that's good with me.
That sounds good. So the second meeting in February.
Twenty-four.
And we have all five members here.
Put it back on discussion, right?
We get back on discussion. We'll get, try to find with y'all's help and everybody's help and the chairman's help. I want his input on this. We'll try to find someone that's neutral and can bring us some information. Thank you. The last thing on discussion, and I think after we hit this item, before we go to action, we'll take a short break. But the last thing I see on discussion is the feasibility study for the Wellness Center. And my contact on that one says Commissioner Jimmy Walker.
Thank you, sir. I won't say a lot this evening. I just, I remembered a couple of years ago, there was some interest in a community wellness center in the Metis area. It would serve Walnut Cove and there was a lot of interest particularly in the Walnut Cove area. It would serve Danbury, Lawsonville as well. It would serve this area of the county. We have a Y in King. We're very blessed that we have that. I helped get it there and worked hard, worked hard actually to help get it there, but people need to realize at the same time, the Y picks the places for the Y where they'll put Ys, not the local community, even though they want support from the local community, ultimately the decisions with the Y where they put them. And they chose that particular area. They did a lot of studies. I think they did at least three studies before that Y was actually put where it is. And folks over here feel like it's just a long ways to go to work out or use the facilities that a wellness center or community center would offer. It's a long ways to go to the Y over to the other side of the county. They really hope to have something in this area. And one step, it turns out, in finding out what level of real interest there is in seeing something like this happen is a feasibility study. I think Commissioner Morris suggested that. I think I've heard Commissioner Yance say he might be interested in seeing what kind of results we'd get from a feasibility study. Well, we actually put $25,000 into our most recent budget for a study. And here it is almost February and we haven't done anything so far. So I was thinking at least we could get the conversation sort of started about exactly what the study is supposed to accomplish, who would we get to do it, when would it be done, those types of things. So don't expect to do a lot of that at this meeting this evening. Just maybe start thinking about it and maybe put it on the, back on a discussion meeting, we could have more information. Maybe our manager or Shannon could help get some information as far as who's available to do these kinds of studies, that type thing, and have it at the second meeting, maybe second meeting in February.
We have put out quite a few myself and Will has been helping in Torrey too, trying to, I've sent several emails out to different companies requesting just information on feasibility studies they might do. I know the Four Square Company that presented the one back in the recreation task force days is definitely one that does it. But all the others we've reached out to don't really do a beginning feasibility study per se. They'll do a feasibility study after you know you're doing a project, trying to help you decide on the size and placement, things like that. But as far as just a should you do it project, a lot of them were not really, don't really do that kind of work. Another person suggested the PTRC, so we sent some out to them and haven't gotten anything back yet. And we'll check with a couple of places even today and same thing, we didn't get a lot of feedback from them on them knowing anybody that does those kinds of studies as far as what you're looking for, I think, which is a should we build it? If we did, is this a good location? They're more of like, you know you're going to build it already, you think, is this a good spot? How big should it be? You know, all that. So we'll keep putting that out there. The other question I had was if we were to do an RFP and send it out, I'd be afraid we wouldn't get a big response just because we hadn't had a big response from the questions we've asked to the ones that we knew. I even sent something out to our salary study group asking for if they knew anybody that would possibly be interested or know much about it. Just wanted to get somebody here to talk to you about it. But we've not had a lot of success in finding a company thus far that we've worked on for the last while. If you have any suggestions at all of anything that you would like for us to try, I'd be glad to try it.
When I was on the board in King, or might have been when I was mayor of King actually, we did a study. It was on the services that King was offering and what our citizens really wanted as far as any additional services. We actually added a couple, leaf pickup, brush pickup. Very, citizens were very pleased that we listened to them. I think it's important for people in this part of the county to feel like we're hearing them. There were many, many people got in touch with me over how interested they were in seeing something happen as far as meeting the recreational needs of this part of the county. Now, if the Y would do something, I've had people ask me multiple times, would the Y consider a satellite Y here or a certain type of a Y facility? I think we could even explore that option. To me, I want to see the recreational needs of our people met to the greatest extent possible because I think that's just as significant as far as the quality of life in our county. When we were discussing the community and wellness center, pretty good a while back, there was a gentleman here making a presentation on our health insurance, brought a quote, he worked for one of the companies, it may be the company we have now. And we mentioned something about a wellness center, community center, wellness center in this part of the county. And the gentleman really got excited. He said, you're right on the front edge of a trend. I like your thinking. He says, that's what we want to see. We want to see our people healthier and have more opportunities to try to work to stay healthier. He said, really like the sound of what you mentioned. So we know there's a lot of interest. Now, the question is, is it enough interest? How do we meet the needs? And I'd like to see a study, whether it's by the Four Square Group or whoever. I did this for 13 years at Reynolds, but I don't think I'd be in a good position to attempt to do something like this. We even mentioned in-house, I think, at one time. And there were limitations as far as doing a study on our own. But I think we need this information. I think it could be very useful to know exactly where our citizens are and what they would support. And if we can go ahead and at least let them know we've listened to them, we've heard them, and we're trying to address what they've brought to us as a need, I think we would be serving our public will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion, Commissioner Morris?
Thanks, Ms. Chairman. The one suggestion Shannon you may do is just do a formal RFI instead of an RFP, but I don't think we're in a position to do that yet. But that, just send that out in all the normal places and see what kind of feedback you get as to someone that would be interested in doing a study for us. But I think we got to do some front-end work before that. I'm struggling a little bit with what's the, where did this requirement come from? I've heard, I've heard this thing, but you know, for years since I moved here about, well, this side of the county needs to get equal to what the other side of the county gets. And then I've heard that we did do, I think, a fairly significant investment that the county government did in the YMCA, I believe, 400K, does that sound right?
I think the city, King and the county did contribute.
Yeah, so the county government that's over here, you know, contributed to the thing in King. So then I've heard, well, if they're going to contribute to that in that part of the county, they should contribute something over here. All those are very valid points, I think. But I would like to figure out, so we can figure out what our real requirement is. I mean, I'd hate to build a wellness center and then all the people come up and say, well, I really would rather have had a Bluegrass Opera House, you know? And we could have done ABC. So I'm not even exactly sure why we're, how we're going to get to this definition of what, I agree with what the people wants, what we should do. And then, but I think we got to figure out what it is the folks really want and how to do that. I don't have the total answer to how we do that. But we spend a bunch of money, which is what was being talked about before, I think we have to have a really valid requirement that whoever this group of people is, I guess they're either Walnut Cove or they're either Walnut Cove plus everybody on this side of the mountain or whatever that group is that we want to survey. We need to understand what they want before we launch off here in the wrong direction or whatever and do something that would not be supported if we did build it, you know? That's my concern. But, I mean, I live over here. I like to have any number of these kind of things, but. I'd like to have any number of these kind of things, but we still want to get it wrong. And so I want to be very deliberate in how we go about doing this, especially if it's going to cost millions of dollars.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'll keep it very brief. I too would support doing an RFI if that's what we decide to do. But if I remember in the past, had, did we not have an offer from the Y to help us with a study?
I still have a copy of that list, a letter of intent that they were going to, with the Four Square Company back when that was all being discussed. They were going to pay, the study was estimated around 25,000, and they were doing a letter of intent to pay 5,000 of the study.
So if you go back and read the minutes, I mean, I too agree with you, Commissioner Morrison, that I want to do what the citizens in the area want. But when I looked at the blueprints of the Wellness Center, and if you go back and listen to the minutes of our meetings, you'll hear very clearly that one of my main concerns is we were literally building a gem with a walking track and had plans for expansion in the future. But I said many times, we're poor at expansion in Stokes County. Most of the time, by the time we get ready to expand, it's time to tear down and rebuild. So all that being said, I want to make sure that we do it right. If this is the avenue that we're going, then let's reach out to the Y and see if that offer still stands. If it does, I think that's a viable option. I don't know how the rest of us feel, but they're in the business. So I think that they would certainly have some valid input.
Might help you do the RFI better if you could, if you just started there.
Right.
Possibly. I'll make one other comment before it goes back to you.
He messed his hand.
One thing, one thing I would also say is if Commissioner Walker was correct, this was budgeted. We promised the people we would budget. If we budgeted, it's in the budget. And if we don't get, if we don't get to it before the next budget, then we, I think, unless we've decided for some reason not to, we should continue it in the next budget till we get it done.
Sure.
Either get it done or decide not to do it, or whatever we're going to do with it. But not drop it, not let the budget cut it off on us. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker.
Sorry to interrupt you, sir, in any way.
Okay, good.
I think the offer from the Y is certainly something to consider. I believe in looking at the whole picture of this Community and Wellness Center, we were told by a gentleman who made a presentation to us from the USDA that there are funds available on a very favorable basis for this type of facility. Very low interest loans, grants, which would cost the county nothing. And we have not even explored what is available or is assistance in helping this happen here in this area. We just put everything kind of on hold. It's like, well, maybe if we ignore it long enough, it'll go away. I don't think it will. I think there's too strong and too, too deep of feelings in some of our citizens, particularly in this area. They want to see something. They feel like they need it, they deserve it, they've went way too long without it, and they're ready to see something happen. Now, how do we fit all those pieces together? I think there needs to be some thought put into that. And it very well could start with a feasibility study, done right, not biased in any way. I learned from my, as I mentioned, 13 years' work at Reynolds Tobacco and Market Research that you can design a study to give you any kind of answer that you want. Just depends on how you word your questions and who you ask. But if it's done right, and hopefully it will be, I have no reason to believe otherwise at this time, we could get some very useful and valuable information as far as how to proceed with this. We need to, at some time, it certainly would appear, I would think, to start checking and see what kind of assistance is available as far as grants. The only, the only thing that the gentleman from the USDA asked us not to do was don't call this a recreation center. He strongly suggested we call it a community and wellness center because there's a lot of funding available for that. And another thing he mentioned, if this could be tied in in some way to see that it's helping with the opioid crisis by giving families and young people, et cetera, wholesome activities, he said there was a lot of funds available if we were somehow able to do that. The other thing is that we haven't mentioned here this evening is the location we were looking at is the old prison property over by the community college and early college. Well, this facility would also serve as a gem and recreational facility for those two schools. And you talk about getting excited, and there was, is that me? When word got out among the early college students and started to get out some among the precise tech students, there was a lot of excitement, particularly with early college, about having a facility there that they could use. And it would be a multipurpose facility, and it would be open to the public a lot of hours, and the schools would have it there when they wanted to use it for PE. So it would cover more than just one base. But I feel like we owe it to the people to really try to do something that's important to our citizens. And I have every right, every reason to believe that this is important to the folks who live in this area. Now, may I add one thing? I'd like to see community and wellness centers around the county. I would like to see more than just this one in this area. Francisco over that way, for example, Westfield, other areas. There's even people in King who, even though the Y talks about scholarships and serving a lot of people in a lot of ways, and thank you, Lord, that we have the Y. But there's a lot of people who can't use the services at the Y because they just don't fit the model type of person that uses the Y. There could even be one over in that area, Germantown, for example, that would serve a useful purpose. Anyhow, I think we are started. That's good. That's what I hoped would happen at the meeting this evening. I hope there would be some discussion and interest, and maybe we can just continue from here.
Thank you.
Let's say one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I'll keep this very brief. But one thing, when we met at the league governments meeting last couple of weeks ago now, one thing that stood out to me is the city of King said that they were hosting a softball tournament that was coming up in the spring. Said that this would be the second year that they had done it. And last year it brought in 5,000, approximately 5,000 people. Those are the type things that I'm looking at with this. When we talk about reducing insurance rates, yeah, that's a great thing. But if we can create revenue too and build it to a scale that will bring people in and bring people into the county and therefore bring revenue, and we're talking about a quarter, quarter of a cent sales tax, that's more people coming in, more people contributing. So I want to make sure that everyone understands, it's not necessarily that I'm against this. I've said many times, I would love to see a facility that could actually create revenue and then you build off of that. You know, then it creates a need for restaurants, it creates a need for hotels, motels, things of that nature. That's what we need to be looking at long term.
I mean, I agree 100%. And when you can do that, then you can leverage that for grants. Whenever you can, when you have this multiple level of one thing leveraging the other one. Right, exactly. That's why I said the Opera House might bring a lot of money too.
Sure. Let's do both.
Whatever we got, whatever we do. I think it needs to meet that criteria you just described.
One, I'll use your comment. Your comment, I'll make it brief. Commissioner Gault, you come up with a plan, or let's get something started, a plan that we could put into place and help bring about what you're describing. You have my total support.
Thank you. May I? Thank you. I might mind run short. I heard a lot of different suggestions and ideas, and I think they all have their own merit. And you put them all together and work together, I think some good things can happen. One thing we did do is we put in 25,000. And it was, it's in capital, isn't it? Yes. 25,000 in capital to do the feasibility study. So my suggestion would be Chairman Nickelston will be back on the last Monday of February that we meet. And Commissioner Walker will be here. And that'd give Will, Jake, Shannon, all of y'all a time, almost a month to do as much research as y'all can on this, you know? And bring that information back to us on that date. And I'd say put this item back on discussion the last meeting in February. Is that okay with everyone? And give them a chance to do some research on this. Okay, well, nothing else, let's take a, it's about seven to eight, let's take about a 10-minute break. Let's take about a 10-minute break. Squad, not your last line.
We'll have to feed you if you come.
It's coming up. All right. Yes, we're ready. We'll be coming out of recess and moving into our action agenda. And I think our first thing I have is a resolution authorized in the Silla County issued. Let me pull this up on my computer. And Glenda, are you here to handle?
Yes, if you have any questions.
Since you want to come up and just, we've all read it, but if you just want to go over it real quickly.
That's fine. This is kind of our normal procedure when someone retires or in this situation with Bubby. So the sheriff just asked that we do a resolution to approve the sale in of his sidearm, to which will be his family of Wilson, Arnold, Bubby Blankenship. And we will issue the badge or retire the badge at no cost. And then with his Smith and Wesson, the serial number DWJ 3323, and we will sell it at a price of a dollar to his family.
Very good. A motion to approve. Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second and discussion.
My only question is, why, I mean, it's fine a dollar, but is that just traditionally what we've done?
Yeah.
It's what we've, you have to set, my understanding from the procurement laws, you have to set a price of something. And so that the dollar is what we have always done.
I mean, I was perfectly fine with a penny. I figured we had to have something.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the dollar's just the standard the sheriff has always done. So that's kind of what we've kind of traditionally stuck with.
All right. Any other discussion? Because we've got a motion and a second to approve. No further discussion. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. Next is our county buildings and new restructuring and budget amendment number 70. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Oakley.
Chairman, this was presented to the last board meeting to the board concerning some existing buildings. And if we utilize them, we could cut back on the space that was needed on your maintenance building. Hopefully that the, the small amount of lighting and door locks and whatever, and utilizing these, and upgrades in these existing county buildings that is not being used now. And this is also talking about a recent purchase from Mr. Fulp on his garage. That it would come to a total of $32,463. And then you also have a budget amendment number 70 with that amount on it. All of this is coming out, there was one of, some of the concerns with the board is where this money was coming from. It is coming from Capital Reserve. And as you can see, the budget amendment states that. And it's also some savings of $3,379 from the previous amount submitted of $37,000. It is now $32,000. So they just found some additional savings on some of the others for some of the grading work. And if you let the grader do this work and dig the trench, then it would be $900 here that the electrician wouldn't have to charge. And then there was some, it's not gravel is not needed or whatever. There's some stuff at the new garage and just start utilizing that and allowing the EMS emergency services to place their equipment inside until we come up with the budget, at the budget time, and let these departments give you a ideas of what they would love for these buildings to be used for. And giving the board a chance to think about it also throughout the rest of this year. So with that said, I'm asking the board to allow us to utilize this $32,463 to upgrade some existing buildings and start using them in a manner that it would probably, hopefully more than enough to pay for it through the savings in our new maintenance building.
Thanks, sir. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the county buildings and new restructuring request, including budget amendment number 70.
We got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Have a discussion also, please.
Okay. And now that we got a motion and a second, we do have the option for discussion. Mr. Walker?
I have a question for Brandon or Jake. This 18 by 36-foot metal carport, is that all three sides enclosed?
Yes.
So pretty good protection for our equipment.
Yes.
Good.
Right, this would be at the hospice house, right?
Yes.
And this would be the new EMS station for Danbury. Hopefully, in the upcoming budget also.
Is the house in pretty good shape?
Structurally, yes, it is in good shape. It's just, it's very, it's very little to be done other than working with life writing. They're already, they're already doing a lot of moving, just stuff. So it's a lot of hospital stuff there that they're moving out. And I think they're requesting that the carport be theirs still for some storage area. And Brandon and the Danbury folks that are now housed in the hospital are working with them on that and doing whatever you need in this house to bring it up to standard to where you are ready to be dispatched from that location.
Any further discussion?
Just a couple of questions, Chairman. The, what we're approving is 32,000 and change or whatever to be spent. This is to be spent prior to our next budget or during this budget year, right, Julia? And the 32,000 covers, it will cover all of these, well, one of them doesn't require any money. Glenda's fueling thing, right?
Right.
It don't require anything. So what this does is it pays for the things that need to be done on the other four?
Yes.
Items?
Yes.
Okay. And so, and is there going to be additional money in the next budget required to continue on these four? Or will this do the whole thing, do y'all think?
If you elect to move forward with the ones that, you take the old county, the old county garage, that should be basically done.
Mm-hmm.
Be utilized for storage. The new EMS station, it may be some additional work there that is going to have, need to take place or something in the new budget.
Yes, we're going to look at hospital haven that to the house in next year's budget.
Okay.
Just due to the heat and the gravel. I think kind of get all the other work done. The, our chance of snow, if that's ready to be out, we'll have the next budget to include that. Mark will put that into some capital projects.
Okay.
And with the potential of the new purchase of Mike Fulp's garage, then that's got a lot of, a lot of different areas that this, that could have a lot of.
Could be more in the next budget.
Absolutely.
We need this much to get to the next budget.
This will allow us to just go ahead and, we've already done, took possession of this building. Mark is, Del Hot has already got it under lock and key, so we have everything. We're ready to close out the final closing. Ty's got those ready for us to finalize everything with Mr. Fulp. We can start putting some of this equipment that's sitting outside in the weather inside, so.
Okay. Then the other thing we're approving is the moving of the location of the new building. As part of this too, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'm good, I think, with all of it. Right.
Any further discussion before we vote? Here at night, everybody in favor of the motion made, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved for. Thank you. Next item is our Stokes County Board's fee and our amended fee schedule. And it looks like the main thing is going from $30 to $40 per meeting with the Board of Elections, Planning Board, Board of Adjustments, Watershed Commissioners, Fire Commission. Being amended made on 1/27/2020. Any, do we have a motion?
I think motion's approved.
Motion has been made approved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, do we have any discussion?
Just one question, Mr. Chair. Do we have to have a budget amendment to make this change, Julia? We don't, you got enough extra money to?
No, no law.
Okay. Or just increasing the amount, though, that's why I was wondering technically.
No, I don't know how many meetings, you know, sometimes they don't have as many meetings.
You'll just bring one if you need one later then?
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't know, they seem.
They're having their first meeting tomorrow, but it's just an organization. And they won't be able to set their meeting schedule till their fifth member is appointed. So we won't have a meeting scheduled set yet either. Once we get some of that in place, we'll.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else?
Are we all-inclusive with the new fee structure and who will be paying and how much? I don't see Health Board or DSS Board. I wondered where the line falls as far as.
This was your old existing, the one that's on here right now is your existing one. Once we amend this one tonight, we'll, I'll add the Health Board and the DSS Board to it because they're just recently established. So that way, everybody will be the same across the board with $40 per meeting.
What about things like the Child Protection Committee and those types of things?
They, no.
They've never gotten any.
There's not a, there's not money for the pay. This was your existing fee schedule.
You know, by chance, what other counties do as far as compensating their boards?
Not for the boards like you're speaking of like those. There's a lot of different committees, like safety committees. I'm not sure we could find out, but I'm not sure.
It's sort of late in the game to be changing midstream, so I'm not going to hold things up for that. I was just kind of curious. We had boards like our Economic Development Board and some others at times that didn't get anything for a while, and then they finally did. But as hard as, as hard as it is to get volunteers and board members and people willing to serve, maybe this is a step in the right direction to compensate people for their time and trouble and expenses. Two of our boards are Fire Commission. Oh, no. It seemed like at one time, yeah, Fire Commission and Board of Elections get mileage, but the others don't. Is that a level playing field type thing?
I don't, I mean, it's, it's pretty much been, those have been the same since 91 and 94, so I, I don't know.
Well, the commissioners got mileage, the Rick took it away from us.
Y'all voted on it.
No, I just.
We can amend this anytime. Like if you find a board that you think should be on it, it's not, we could.
Uh-huh.
And we can also amend the mileage stuff anytime.
Yeah.
If we decide we want to do that.
Yeah. Now, it's, like I say, kind of late in the game to be changing at this point.
Actually, the budget'd be a good time to look at that.
Well, the budget would have been a good time to look at all of this.
Well, I think the create, like the reinstatement of the DSS Board and the Health Board led you to look at it a little bit earlier so you could get them back on, put them back on the list. And then that led to trying to up the page just a little bit. So you could certainly revisit it during the budget.
Occasionally, I am questioned why we do certain things concerning county finances prior to the budget. But this is small. I, I could go with this.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? You have the motion and a second. There are no further discussion. Everybody in approval of the motion made, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion's passed for. Next one is our appointments on the Stokes Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. And I think there's one vacancy still on that committee, is that correct?
Yes, on the, on the community.
The Stokes Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. And it says there's four vacancies still on that committee. So we're going to have a motion on what we have at this time.
I think it's approved.
Motion to approve. Do I have?
See, do we have to open a number four for nominations?
Nominations?
Motion on nominations.
Do that. Yeah, just.
You just open the floor for further nominations and you'll get a motion to close the floor for nominations.
Leave the nominations be closed.
Thank you. Motion that nominations are closed. Discussion. Here at night, everybody in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
I guess we're going to have to poll these.
Who seconded the motion to close the floor for nominations?
I made the motion.
You made the motion.
You made the motion, I think Rick seconded it.
Okay.
We need, we need to poll the, us poll the first one, Stokes Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
I'll start with Rick.
Grabs, Grove, Grove and Langford Lawson Morgan.
Same. Grabs, Grove and Langford Lawson Morgan.
Same. Let's go to the second one, Stokes Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Commissioner Morris.
Hairston Joyce May.
Same. Hairston Joyce May.
Hairston Joyce May. Thank you.
Was easy.
Questions on Stokes County. Next one, as far as who Stacy and Tammy put together. Motion on that one. County Community Child Protection and Child Perpetality Prevention Team Annual Report 2019.
What she's looking for approval here is just for her team members' list. That's quite an extensive list. If you want to do them just as the list is presented, you can. Because she's got those listed out on here.
So these are technically nominees as well?
Right, they were the ones that they requested at the last meeting to be nominated. So if we just.
I'll make a motion that we close nominations.
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay. In a second. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nominations are closed.
And then if you just poll the board, they can, you can say the list is presented, it's fine. Because there's a lot of names on this list.
There's a lot on this one.
List as presented.
We've got Commissioner Yance started off, list as presented. Commissioner Walker?
List as presented.
And the list as presented in the agenda.
Thank you. And I say the same list as presented.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
There was someone that I think had expressed an interest in being on this committee, I don't see their name, um, on this list, but if they, uh, wanted to be on it, could they be added in the future?
Um, you would have to contact Stacy and Tammy. I know last year they were begging people to be on this. They had openings they could not fill. So, I don't, I wouldn't think they would've turned anybody away, but if they don't realize somebody else wanted to be on there, they would need to contact them as far as position.
Now, this is Evelyn Lemons, pastor over at Tessa Grove Church. I know she attended the last meeting.
Okay.
This committee that I attended.
If you, if you wanna just tell her to speak with Stacy or Tammy about that.
Evelyn, Evelyn's actually on here.
Okay. You see her on there? Oh, she is on here.
Oh, okay. I missed her. Whereabouts?
She is the floor.
Well, I see her now, driving along.
Close to the bottom. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. There you go.
Thank you.
Well, we're down to the next last one, closed session policy and procedures. We got closed session information, closed session policy, and the amended closed session policy. We have a motion to approve.
The only change that I made to that was what we discussed the last time, which was to change the wording from where it said that it would not be the policy to release them on the website once they were approved, to saying that it would be the policy to release them on the website. That was the only thing that I had noted that was a change requested. If anybody has anything else, we can certainly change it, but.
What's approved, the board?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the amended closed session policy.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a chance for discussion?
Just one quick question. On this part about the last, very last thing, Shannon, it's closed session minutes. Any closed sessions held prior to the adoption of this policy, it's re-reviewed for release only upon specific requests? What's the process for making a specific request?
I think in the past, what has happened is if somebody just makes a specific request, like they'd make a public records request like they normally do, and then we would, um, put, put those out as far as for release.
Send it to you?
Right. But as far as for the website part, we would just go moving forward on that.
I think if we want one during the past year, we just make a formal request for it.
Right. But I've, with their, and I will be the first to say, during the past while, trying to, new stuff, jobs, all that stuff, I've got a lot of those to catch up with with Ty, and I'll get those done, but it'll just be a little time for some of them.
That's my only question.
Yeah.
I did wanna ask, and, and maybe I, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. Number's four and five. Four says if all commissioners agree, and with the county attorney, they should, shall notify the clerk. And five says if any commissioners disagree in the recommendation, the county attorney and items shall be resolved in closed session. Is the verbiage correct? I mean, I, I'm just asking, does it, is that, is that right? Does that sound right? Does that, that's two. The way it's worded. If all, on number four, and if any commissioners, and it's got more than one commissioner? I know, uh, isolation or.
I think what he's asking is on, like, on the, where it says if any commissioners, like, if one commissioner disagreed, would that launch into having to have a closed session? Or would it have to be more than one? Or if they all are in agreement, it's fine to go forward with it? But if, just if say one says, no, I don't wanna release that yet, you would go into a closed session because that, you have to have a unanimous.
Right.
Okay. Mark, is that right? Is that what?
Yeah. Okay. Goodbye, Evelyn.
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening. Say that one more time. If, if all commissioners agree with the recommendation, then it's fine. If someone disagrees, then what do we do? We just go to closed session, resolve it?
Resolve.
Okay. Okay, got it.
Okay. So, we've got a motion of approval and a second. And we have a chance for discussion. Does anybody else want to say, discuss this? And whether or not we'll take a vote?
Good.
Anybody in favor of the motion made, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for. I think we're down to the last one. Uh, GCPC expansion funds allocations, budget amendment number sixty-seven. Need a motion amendments.
Make a motion to approve the GCPC expansion funds with budget amendment sixty-seven.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Now, we, any discussion?
Just a little.
Okay.
Each time we go through this process, and I've mentioned this to the, uh, committee as well, I, I feel like the needs of seeing the allocations, but they don't ask for more. So, how can we give them more if they don't ask for more?
These funds are a little bit different. You'll see that.
These are state funds.
Well, you'll see those are the ones you're talking about coming up soon. This was an extra allocation because of the rate of age.
Went from sixteen to eighteen.
So, this is different and doesn't require a county match. You'll see the ones you're talking about soon where you were trying to encourage them to maybe increase the request.
Doesn't require a county match, Shannon, but the state funds allocated for that change from sixteen to eighteen don't cover the additional expenses. The state shortchanged them, and they didn't ask for any assistance from the county to try to make up for the difference, which I was surprised they didn't. But anyhow, it is what it is.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we take a vote? No, no, I'll ask, we've got a motion and a second. I'll ask for a vote now. Everybody in favor of the motion made, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for. Now, I'm asking, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Second. Second from Commissioner Morse.
We've got two minutes left.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good job, Mr. Chairman. You got it pretty well.
Or carries for. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Well, we got the.
A penny on seven. No, I was approached recently.